All right, we'll call the court to order for the special meeting. We had to move it from the morning to the afternoon. At this time, I'd like to ask William to say the invocation and then we'll have a call, then we'll have a roll call.
Let's pray. Father God, we come to you this evening seeking your guidance and your wisdom for the decisions to be made here. We pray that you guide and keep your hand upon all of them, Lord, and make them for the betterment of this county and the people there. And we ask you in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Is there a motion to approve Penny Burke as a temporary clerk? The motions are second. Second by Commissioner Lewis. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Judge Jones?
President.
Commissioner Scott?
President.
Commissioner Atkins?
President.
Commissioner Lewis?
Present.
We are ready to proceed. I'd like to ask my friend Jerry Huffman if he would lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Jerry, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. We are the product of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the November 4 meeting of the fiscal court?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Scott. Is her second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. All right, I'm going to do these together because there's a Kentucky ballgame and I think people are going to be mad if they miss it. All right, is there a motion to renew lease PR 4471 with the Finance Administration Cabinet for the property located at 36 Mingo Street, which is the Phillips Courthouse, for one year for a total of $5,400? To renew lease 50, I'm sorry, PR 4387 with the Finance Administration Cabinet for property located at 25 230 US Highway 119? The Belfry Courthouse for the Cabinet for Health and Family Services for one year for the sum of $9,990? To renew lease PR 3214 with the Finance Administration Cabinet, Department for Facilities and Support for property located at Coal Hollow and Island Creek, which is the state police firing range, one year renewed with no charge? PR 5604 with the Finance Administration Cabinet, Department for Facilities and Support, located at 146 Main Street, third floor, for the Cabinet for Justice and Public Safety, Department of Juvenile Justice, one year for $22,512? To renew lease PR 5470 for one year with the Finance Administration Cabinet for property located on the third floor of the Pike County Detention Center for probation and parole for the sum of $60,120? To renew for one year lease 50, PR 5892 with the Finance Administration Cabinet for facilities support for property located at Douglas Parkway, which is the Department of Military Affairs and Kentucky Mercy Management for one year, no charge? Is there, is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott. Any question or discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
Roy, you have a first reading of proposed road ordinance relating to the speed limit on Ziegler Drive. And this is a first reading. No action will be taken at this time.
Yes, it's a proposal for a 15 mile an hour speed limit on Ziegler Drive. And you have, it looks to me like about a dozen signatures, which would, and then there's another page with that many on it too, I think. So you've got quite a few people on Ziegler Drive. What's the 15 mile an hour speed limit?
All right, so that's the first reading. It will be advertised and will be on after it's been sufficiently advertised for a second reading. All right, next time is where you'll be, Greg?
I've got a couple of things, Judge. We have bought in the last year or so four six-wheelers Kenworths with 10-foot beds. And we need to get them shooed up with snow plows and salter boxes. Got a quote from Baker Equipment. They're on, they're on the state, on the Sourcewell contract. Last year, we shooed up another Kenworth that we had, but it had a 12-foot bed on it, so it was a little bit bigger box. But it's $42,000 to shoo that truck up. I can shoo all four of these trucks up for $26,200 a truck. Same equipment. We just kind of negotiated a little bit better price. So we can put plows and salters on the four Kenworth trucks that we have for a total of $104,800, purchasing through Baker Equipment. That'd be my recommendation.
Can't plow snow and clean roads without it, correct?
Right.
So is your motion by Commissioner Atkins?
Yeah, a motion.
Second by who?
Second.
Second. Commissioner Lewis. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. All right, I'm going to do these together because there's a Kentucky ballgame and I think people are going to be mad if they miss it. All right, is there a motion to renew lease PR 4471 with the Finance Administration Cabinet for the property located at 36 Mingo Street, which is the Phillips Courthouse, for one year for a total of $5,400? To renew lease 50, I'm sorry, PR 4387 with the Finance Administration Cabinet for property located at 25 230 US Highway 119? The Belfry Courthouse for the Cabinet for Health and Family Services for one year for the sum of $9,990? To renew lease PR 3214 with the Finance Administration Cabinet, Department for Facilities and Support for property located at Coal Hollow and Island Creek, which is the state police firing range, one year renewed with no charge? PR 5604 with the Finance Administration Cabinet, Department for Facilities and Support, located at 146 Main Street, third floor, for the Cabinet for Justice and Public Safety, Department of Juvenile Justice, one year for $22,512? To renew lease PR 5470 for one year with the Finance Administration Cabinet for property located on the third floor of the Pike County Detention Center for probation and parole for the sum of $60,120? To renew for one year lease 50, PR 5892 with the Finance Administration Cabinet for facilities support for property located at Douglas Parkway, which is the Department of Military Affairs and Kentucky Mercy Management for one year, no charge? Is there, is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott. Any question or discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Roy, you have a first reading of proposed road ordinance relating to the speed limit on Ziegler Drive. And this is a first reading. No action will be taken at this time.
Yes, it's a proposal for a 15-mile an hour speed limit on Ziegler Drive. And you have, it looks to me like about a dozen signatures, which would, and then there's another page with that many on it too, I think. So you've got quite a few people on Ziegler Drive. What's the 15-mile an hour speed limit?
All right, so that's the first reading. It will be advertised and will be on after it's been sufficiently advertised for a second reading. All right, next time is where you'll be, Greg?
I've got a couple of things, Judge. We have bought in the last year or so four six-wheelers Kenworths with 10-foot beds. And we need to get them shooed up with snow plows and salter boxes. Got a quote from Baker Equipment. They're on, they're on the state, on the Sourcewell contract. Last year, we shooed up another Kenworth that we had, but it had a 12-foot bed on it, so it was a little bit bigger box. But it's $42,000 to shoo that truck up. I can shoo all four of these trucks up for $26,200 a truck. Same equipment. We just kind of negotiated a little bit better price. So we can put plows and salters on the four Kenworth trucks that we have for a total of $104,800, purchasing through Baker Equipment. That'd be my recommendation.
Can't plow snow and clean roads without it, correct?
Right.
So is your motion by Commissioner Atkins?
Yeah, a motion.
Second by who?
Second.
Second. Commissioner Lewis. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
Something we have on our capital plan that we've been kind of, been in need for, for quite a while. This would be at the maintenance garage as an inloader. There's a lot of heavy stuff they get in deliveries. They have to unload. They've got a little small forklift over there that, that won't hardly handle a lot of stuff that they have to deal with. Especially, it's kind of scary. I think the recycling center has a little small forklift too. A lot of times, we get these 20, 30, and 40-yard open boxes in for solid waste. And they have to get on both sides of it, try to lift it up, let the, let the truck pull out from under it, set it down, then try to drag it around. There's a lot of other stuff they unload. We've got a lot of precast concrete sitting down at the mouth of Ford branch that we're going to use to move that creek over. We don't really have anything to handle this. There's just a lot of uses for an inloader. It's also kind of a universal piece of equipment. It can be used by the road department from time to time when they need it or used by public work from time to time when they need it. The size they need, I've got a couple quotes on a John, I've got a quote on a John Deere 444P loader. This was a two-and-a-half yard bucket and also a set of 72-inch forks. The contract, state contract price on it is $196,000. If we add a extended service agreement and a maintenance agreement, the total will be $222,500. The Caterpillar piece of equipment, it's about the same size as 444P, is a, is a, is a Cat 920. Usually, a Caterpillar loader is, any kind of Caterpillar equipment is usually a little bit more expensive than the John Deere. We've kind of negotiated this down. The original cost is 247.768. We got it down, including the warranty and the extended service contract for $190,375.14. That's a, I think, a great price on that. They've got this in stock. And if we buy it, we can have it in probably another week. And something else I negotiated in, I can negotiate an extra $1,000 in parts and service credit that we can use on anything we buy from Boyd, from Boyd Equipment. So we could buy this from Boyd Equipment with the extended warranty and the maintenance agreement. And it is on state, it is on our capital plan for $190,375.14. That'd be my recommendation.
What's the price of that, Greg?
$190,375.14, including maintenance agreement, extended warranty, and a set of 72-inch forks, along with the two-and-a-half yard bucket. I, I got a quote also on a 930. I think we decided that's a little bit bigger than, than what we need there. This 920 would work great.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is motion also the issue paper for the same?
Yep.
Is there a motion by Commissioner Atkins? Second?
Second.
By Commissioner Lewis. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
Thank you, Judge. That's all I have.
All right, next item is road supervisor report. Baby says you don't have anything. Is there a motion to approve the completed and scheduled work orders?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Scott. Is her second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Hey Frankie, how much of this stuff on the bill list would broke, would be either reimbursement from line items that we've drawn down on coal severance for road work or?
I mean, we're all upset when we're on a flat, opposite state. And we're seeing a ton of money.
You got the Mountain Enterprise stuff. You've got King Creek, which will be mostly. That's what I was trying to figure out. So the Bizac stuff, is that just paving? What is the Bizac stuff? That's on the landfill.
That's on the landfill.
Okay. And then Mountain Enterprise is for asphalt. And then Title Basin would be on the 25th block, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, just want to make sure I was correct. All right, it is my motion to acknowledge hiring Columbus Dwayne Harms as a concrete finisher, special crew, 5H rate of pay effective 11, 10, 25. Acknowledge hiring Zachary Taylor Hager as a carpenter, public works, at a 5H rate of pay effective 11, 17, 25. And to acknowledge hiring Trey Allen Morris as a flood planning coordinator, trainee, at a 3A rate of pay effective 11, 19, 25. Is her second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any question or discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Anything from any of the department heads? Roy, Frankie, William, commissioners?
I have something, Judge.
Yes, sir.
Don't know if it's the proper time to bring it up or not, but I've had, we had a lot of problems last year with our weed mower. We went for several months without a weed mower man last year. I think the court ought to look at it, and this is just my problem. I think you should give them a pay raise, at least to a four. Because I really think that that'd help us keep going. We won't have that problem, you know what I mean? It's on a 3H rate of pay, you know what I mean? And I think it's a heavy, big piece of equipment.
I mean, we can look at, we, what we probably need to do is let Frankie run the numbers and see what that raise would cost and figure it out. I mean, look, there's a lot of these positions that are underpaid.
Yeah, but you know, that is a heavy piece of equipment, you know what I mean?
Expensive piece of equipment, but you know, we need to, but we need to take a look at it because, you know, you're opening a can of worms up. Because if you start giving one grade, then everybody else is taking well. Everybody else is going to be asking, wanting to know why they don't get a bump up. So, I mean, you all decide what you want to do, but I think you need to run the numbers. And I have, I've preached this. Cabinet for Health and Family Services for one year for the sum of $9,990. To renew lease PR 3214 with the Finance Administration Cabinet, Department for Facilities and Support for property located at Coal Hollow and Island Creek, which is the State Police firing range, one year renewal with no charge. PR 5604 with the Finance Administration Cabinet, Department for Facilities and Support, located at 146 Main Street, third floor, for the Cabinet for Justice and Public Safety, Department of Juvenile Justice, one year for $22,512 to renew lease PR 5470 for one year with the Finance Administration Cabinet for property located on the third floor of the Pike County Detention Center for Probation and Parole for the sum of $60,120 to renew for one year lease 50, PR 5892 with the Finance Administration Cabinet for Facilities and Support for property located at Douglas Parkway, which is the Department of Military Affairs and Kentucky Emergency Management for one year, no charge. Is there a, is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott. Any questions or discussions seen? Now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Roy, you have a first reading of proposed road ordinance relating to the speed limit on Ziegler Drive. And this is a first reading, no action will be taken at this time.
Yes, it's a proposal for a 15 mile an hour speed limit on Ziegler Drive. And you have, it looks to me like about a dozen signatures, which would, and then there's another page with that many on it too, I think. So you've got quite a few people on Ziegler Drive, but what's the 15 mile an hour speed limit?
All right, so that's the first reading. It will be advertised and will be on after it's been sufficiently advertised for a second reading. All right, next item is where are your bids, Greg?
I've got a couple of things, Judge. We have bought in the last year or so four six-wheelers Kenworths with 10-foot beds and we need to get them shooed up with snow plows and salter boxes. Got a quote from Baker Equipment there on, they're on the state con, or on the Sourcewell contract. Last year, we shooed up another Kenworth that we had, but it had a 12-foot bed on it, so it was a little bit bigger box, but it's $42,000 to shoe that truck up. I can shoe all four of these trucks up for $26,200 a truck, same equipment. We just kind of negotiate a little bit better price so we can put plows and salters on the four Kenworth trucks that we have for a total of $104,800 purchasing through Baker Equipment. That'd be my recommendation.
Can't plow snow and clean roads without it, correct?
Right.
So is your motion by Commissioner Atkins?
Yeah, I motion.
Second by who?
Second.
Second. Commissioner Lewis, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
Something we have on our capital plan that we've been kind of, been in need for, for quite a while, this would be at the maintenance garage as, as an in loader. There's a lot of heavy stuff they get in, deliveries they have to unload. They've got a little small forklift over there that, that won't hardly handle a lot of stuff that they have to deal with, especially, it's kind of scary. I think the recycling center has a little small forklift too. A lot of times, we get these 20, 30, and 40 yard open boxes in for solid waste and they have to get on both sides of it, try to lift it up and let the, let the truck pull out from under and set it down, then try to drag it around. There's a lot of other stuff they unload. We've got a lot of precast concrete sitting down at the mouth of Ford branch that we're gonna use to move that creek over. We don't really have anything to handle this. There's just a lot of uses for an in loader. It's also kind of a universal piece of equipment, can be used by the road department from time to time when they need it, or used by public work from time to time when they need it. The size they need, got a couple quotes on a John, I got a quote on a John Deere 444P loader. This was a two and a half yard bucket and also a set of 72-inch forks. The contract, state contract price on that is $196,000. If we add a extended service agreement and a maintenance agreement, the total will be The Caterpillar piece of equipment, it's about the same size as 444P as a, as a, as a Cat 920. Usually a Caterpillar loader is, any kind of Caterpillar equipment is usually a little bit more expensive than the John Deere. We've kind of negotiated this down. The original cost is 247, 768. We got it down, including the warranty and the extended service contract for $190,375.14. That's a, I think, a great price on that. They've got this in stock, and if we buy it, we can have it in probably another week. And something else I negotiated in, I could negotiate an extra $1,000 in parts and service credit that we can use on anything we buy from Boyd, from Boyd Equipment. So we could buy this from Boyd Equipment with, with the extended warranty and the maintenance agreement. And it is on state, it is on our capital plan for $190,375.14, and that'd be my recommendation.
What's the price of that, Greg?
$190,375.14, including maintenance agreement, extended warranty, and a set of 72-inch forks, along with the two and a half yard bucket. I, I got a quote also on a 930. I think we decided that's a little bit bigger than, than what we need there. This 920 would work great.
Is there a motion?
How much motion?
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. This motion also issued paper for the same.
Yep.
Is there a motion by Commissioner Atkins, second?
Second.
By Commissioner Lewis. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
Thank you, Judge, that's all I have.
All right. Next item is road supervisor report. Fabian said he don't have anything, is there a motion to approve the completed and scheduled work orders?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Scott is her second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Frankie, one motion, treasurer's business.
Authorize the following inter-fund transfer for the October 2025 to transfer $1 million from the general fund to the jail fund. Acknowledge receipt of the sheriff and clerk's 2550 report for October 2025. Authorize a check to Kentucky DLG in the amount of $122,196.14 to remit funds in the LGDF recaptured account back to the county, single county account, and to authorize payment of the November expenditure list dated today, plus any other utility bills received before we run checks.
Is there a motion to approve the treasurer's business as stated?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Lewis, is her second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any questions or discussions seen?
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Hey Frankie, how much of this stuff on the, the bill list would broke, would be either reimbursement from line items that we've drawn down on coal severance for road work or... You got the Mountain Enterprise stuff, you've got King Creek, which would be mostly... That's what I was trying to figure out. So the Biz Act stuff, is that just paving? What is the Biz Act stuff? That's on the landfill. Okay. And then Mountain Enterprises is for asphalt, and then Title Basin would be on the 25 flood, correct? Okay, just want to make sure I was correct. All right. It is my motion to acknowledge hiring Columbus Dwayne Harmon as a concrete finisher, special crew, 5H rate of pay effective 11, 10, 25, acknowledge hiring Zachary Taylor Hager as a carpenter at Public Works at a 5H rate of pay effective 11, 17, 25, and to acknowledge hiring Trey Allen Morris as a flood planning coordinator, trainee at a 3A rate of pay effective 11, 19, 25, is her second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any questions or discussions seen?
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Anything from any of the department heads? Roy, Frankie, William, commissioners?
I have something, Judge.
Yes, sir.
Don't know if it's the proper time to bring it up or not, but I've had, we had a lot of problems last year with our weed mower. We went for several months over there without a weed mower man last year. I think the court ought to look at it, and this is just my problem. I think you should give them a pay raise, at least to a four, because I, I really think that that'd help us keep going. We won't have that problem, you know what I mean? It's on a 3H rate of pay, you know what I mean? And I think it's a heavy, big piece of equipment.
I mean, we can look at, we, what we probably need to do is let Frankie run the numbers and see what that raise would cost to figure it out. I mean, look, there's a lot of these positions that are underpaid.
Yeah. But you know, that is a heavy piece of equipment, you know what I mean?
Expensive piece of equipment, but you know, we need to, but we need to take a look at it because, you know, you're opening a can of worms up, because if you start giving one raise, then everybody else is seeking well. Everybody else is gonna be asking, wanting to know why they don't get a bump up. So, I mean, you all decide what you want to do, but I think you need to run the numbers. And I have, I've preached this sermon at some point, maybe in the next four years. Your recurring revenue right now is how much, Frankie?
Thirty dollars.
No, less, how much was it less than your fixed, your recurring revenue, how much less than the fixed cost?
Eight million.
You're eight million upside down, and we've had to manage it with one-time funds and some other things that we've done to be able to cover that. If you're eight million upside down, you got to invest in your equipment, you got to have the stuff to do the work, but at some point, this ain't gonna be sustainable. How many, Fabian said it to me three years ago. I have said, Terry's sitting here from the newspaper. Have I not said that, Terry? What's going on here ain't sustainable. And the more you widen that gap, the harder it is. I mean, it's one thing to buy a piece of equipment, which is a one-time purchase, but the payroll is something that's gonna be carried forward, and that raises your workers' comp premiums, it raises your FIC and Medicare, it raises your pension contribution. So, you know, we can look at it. If you all want to vote for that, then we can take it up at one of the next court meetings. But I think you all need to look at the numbers, because the three of you all are running and I ain't. You're gonna have to make some hard decisions if you're back on this court in a few years.
That's just a thought on my mind, you know.
There's a lot of people, you know, you got to look at where they were wrong, where they were when I came in as judge, and they hadn't had but one pay raise in eight or nine years. Is that right, Frankie? Something like that?
Something like that.
Eight or nine years without a pay raise, and they've had six since I've been judge. We've tried to get the pay up for the workers, we've tried to treat them fair, we got a safety program, they got new equipment, they got safe equipment. Our comp rates are down because we've made sure that we're doing everything to keep people from getting hurt by, by requiring them to follow the plan. That's why we've got probably one of the most highly qualified safety experts or professionals in the region here. But you all decided, if you want to raise it, all I'm just telling you right up front, the more you increase that gap between your fixed cost and your recurring revenue, the deeper that hole is gonna have to be dug out at some point in the future.
That's all I have.
All right. I'm, I'm not saying I'm against it, Ron, I'm just saying we need to look at what the numbers are. Let Frankie make that decision. I don't have anything. Anybody else have anything?
I do, Judge. I've got just a few things here. Number one, I want to hit on and thank our road department, those guys, they've done an excellent job over there on the paving in a few places they've got it to as of right now. And just more or less, I was just gonna ask Fabian what was, as far as, I know we got a one-holler over there in Osborne, what, what's our plans there at Osborne Fork when we're gonna try to get to that?
All right, so there just, no, Frankie had asked, Mr. Lewis had asked me before about getting Osborne even when we were up there doing total, but it's just, there was, with the time, what we had already planned on doing, there was no way that we could get that done this year. So we will put it on for next year, early next year, if, you know, barring something happened, there should be no reason why we can't get it on. But you know, as with the flooding and everything else, I mean, you, you have to just not sort of making a promise, because you never know what's gonna happen, but we should be able to get it.
It's going, it's going to depend on money, too. You got, you collected 59,000 in coal severance tax in the first quarter.
Yeah.
You're gonna have to spend about a million. Look, I was able to secure about four, was it 4.7 million to help with this landfill expansion that don't cost from the state? Didn't cost taxpayers a penny. I saw somebody was saying that we hadn't done anything on the landfill. We're gonna, we're working, and the public needs to know this. We're doing a six to seven-year expansion right now, or Biz Act's over there working. It's gonna cost the people of the county no more than a million dollars. We were able to get money from the state to help pay for that. Nobody else in the state could have done that. And, but I'm telling you, if the coal, coal severance tax numbers, we're gonna be lucky to collect a million this year, meaning coal and mineral. Is that about right? Maybe 1.2, Frankie? Where are we looking at?
We were 700,000, 700 and some odd thousand three and a half a year.
And we budgeted what?
We budgeted 1.6.
So we're looking to be about 200, but you were 50, you budgeted 200,000 in coal severance for the first quarter. You collected 59,000.
So, you know, hopefully, what they've done so far has been a great, they've done a great job. I mean, they, they really have, but I just wanted to check on Osborne to see if, you know, maybe the first part of, the end of this year or the first part of next, which I know the plants are down now, we're pretty much done.
I don't ever make a solid promise on this stuff, and the reason is, is not that you can't, but I don't ever want to lie to someone. Anything that happened, like the February flood, that you'll do this paving season or off season, you just, you don't know, but we can say absolutely we'll put it on there. If nothing happens, barring anything like that, you know, we should be able to.
Yeah, it's, it was a very tough year for, for all of us, for sure. I mean, the flood, the ice storms, the snowstorms, the, you know, the health stuff. I mean, it's, it's been a rough year, I tell you, but, but I thank God we've got through a lot, and, and there's been a lot accomplished. I mean, they really have, that, you know, bearing all the issues that we've run into. I guess the, the next thing I was gonna mention, which I don't see, I don't think needs in here, but I, and I'll tell you where I come up with this at. Last night, we had a, and actually someone had shot a deer, and they was trying to track it, and they hunting, so we had to call Hazard, a guy down in Hazard, and he came up about one o'clock in the morning, and he had a drone, and it was an infrared drone, and, and it just blowed my mind what you could see from that drone that he was using. And one of the first places my thought process went was, you know, we do, you know, fortunately, we being blessed in our county for sure for this happening, but you know, at any given time, you know, a two or three-year-old child could get out and, and get lost in the hills or, or whatever, and that was the first place that my mind went to. It wasn't on a deer. And I was just wondering if we do have access or do we have one of those?
We've got drones. When the kid disappeared in, in McGoffin County, we sent our drone down.
It went down to them, yeah.
We bought all, we bought a lot of this stuff since I've been judge, we got...
That's awesome, because I, so I was just a question, I was, because I thought, well, if we don't, maybe that's something we could look at, you know, on this emergency fund and stuff that, you know, when we talked about the fire departments getting, getting these things, I could just see that as really something that would really help a child, because you know, in times like that right there, you know, we, you don't have time to waste when you got a child out lost, and the quicker, quicker we can get something like that to, a lost child, the better off we would be, and the child also. The next thing, and then I'm done, the meeting is Thursday with the power company over at the library, just wanted to remind everybody about that. You know, I, I know that our, our electrical rates and stuff is, it's very, 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 very tough, and e- even if you got a job, I can't imagine, you know, you take somebody like my mother, you know, she's a widow, she's on a fixed income, living by herself. Thankfully, you know, me and my brother, we're, we're really close, and, and we work together with my mommy, and we do anything, but you know, we do have people out there, unfortunately, elderly that don't have those people, you know, to reach out to help them or to, or to go inform, so. And, and you know, I've really been thinking about this, and, and you know, Judge, you know, one of the things that I feel that we need in our community and in our, in our county more than anything in the world is jobs, right? And I really think that if we had jobs and people not moving out and people not leaving, then, you know, it would help us with our power bills, because regardless, the power company still has to keep up that infrastructure. And I just got off the phone with a guy just now, when I got off the elevator, talking about these Bitcoin mines. You know, Pike County is a perfect, perfect place to have those Bitcoin mines set up at, because we already have the infrastructure from the mining industry that's gone now. We already have all that here, and if we could bring in those types of, of, you know, the Bitcoin mining and things like that, I really think that would help us with our power bills also, you know? So, but if you want to be at that meeting at the library Thursday night, please, it's for everyone, you know? We just need to look at issues and ways that we can help bring down the cost if, if all possible. That's, that's really all I got, Judge.
All right. Anything else? William, close us out with the dedication.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for the decisions made here tonight, my Lord, and we thank you for the concern of the citizens therein, and, and we just pray your hands stay upon this county and bless it, and, and, Lord, lead it, that the decisions be made in your will. Lord, we ask all these things in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
I'll make a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. We are adjourned.